Today will be given by Councilmember Odwin Samuel. Everyone, if you so choose, please stand with me and remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag.
Let us pray. For God, we come thanking you for this day and thank you for our health and strength. We ask that you guide us through this day. We ask that you forgive us for our sins, guide us in the direction you would have us to go, help us to work together in unity during the things that you would have us do for this year. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we have the roll call, please.
Mayor Ames.
Here.
Mayor Protim Felshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Durio.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Turner, absent. Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
You left me out.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Gibbs.
Present.
Thank you.
We do have two proclamations today, and I would like to start with Councilmember Samuel.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas we would like to recognize that on June 3rd, 2021, the Alpha Omega Omega Chapter Beaumont Texas of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority celebrated their 88th anniversary. June is a special month of their charter and throughout the month. Today, we would like to honor all founding members of the local Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Chapter as well as pay tribute to all national and local members. And whereas in 1931, several young women residing in Beaumont who had been initiated in Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority sought to establish a chapter in Beaumont, they began meeting alternately in homes and discussed matters of importance they had learned in their undergraduate chapters respectively. Two members from the Alpha Kappa Alpha Omega Chapter in Houston met with the members in Beaumont. After all requirements were satisfied per the Constitution and bylaws, they informed the regional director. Although the membership was small, an exception was made to set up the chapter since the size of the city afforded many possibilities. And whereas on June 3rd, 1933, their hard work finally paid off and the Alpha Omega Omega Chapter was chartered in Beaumont, the following officers were elected: Bosilus Ray Willard, Grand Mathis Hattie Roberts Harden, Ifisola Theodora Adams, Tomashius Amakeet Clerk, the Ivy Leaf Reporter, and Juanita Fisher. And whereas we are blessed to have this sorority in Beaumont, the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated has an impressive list of nationally recognized alumni, including Rosa Parks, Coretta Scott King, Alicia Keys, and Vice President of the United States Kamala Harris, among many other notable women. The local chapter has a plethora of notable women who have done amazing things in our community. The Alpha Omega Omega Chapter's efforts to be of service to our community, they were recognized at their 89th South Central Regional Conference in April of this year. And whereas we would like to recognize the officers of the Alpha Omega Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated for keeping the local, aka, legacy traditions alive. Gwendolyn Lacy, President; Dr. Portchene White, Vice President; Nicole Guidry, Recording Secretary; Wendy Richard, Assistant Recording Secretary; Olivia Douglas, Corresponding Secretary; Brenda Green Dowcor, Treasurer; Sherilyn Fields, Assistant Treasurer; Nicole Dunn, Financial Secretary; Elaine Moore, Assistant Financial Secretary; Judith Merlin, Ivy Leaf Reporter; Lottie Stewart Daniels, Graduate Advisor; Dana Johnson, Membership Chairman; Tracy Arline Chaplin; Dr. Lisa Crockett, Member-at-Large; Mary Agnes Dades, Sergeant-at-Arms; Sandra Henson, Parliamentarian; and Denise Wallace Spooner, Hostess. And now therefore, the Mayor Becky Ames, the Mayor of the City of Beaumont, does hereby proclaim and recognize this June 3rd of this year marked the 88th anniversary of the Alpha Omega Omega Chapter of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated in Beaumont, and encourage all citizens to join the members of this sorority in celebrating another year of distinguished service to our community. Accordingly, the Mayor is here to and set her hand and cause the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed on this day. And coming to accept would be the Graduate Chapter President Gwendolyn Lacy with Sherilyn Fields, the Graduate Advisor, and Denise Wallace Spooner, the Graduate Chapter Social Chair. Please come forward to accept this proclamation.
Good afternoon. To Mayor Becky Ames and, excuse me. Get undressed here. To Mayor Becky Ames and councilmembers, Alpha Omega Omega Chapter is extremely appreciative of this recognition. To my right, would you come, Sherilyn? To my right is our 88th Anniversary Chairman Sherilyn Fields, and to my left is our 88th Chapter Anniversary Committee Member and also an elected official, School Board Member Denise Wallace Spooner. And I would also like to mention another elected official of our chapter is Georgine Guillory, Port Commissioner. Alpha Omega Omega Chapter supports the community not only physically but financially as well. We support Meals on Wheels by delivering meals at least three times a year. Of course, the pandemic intervened, but we are ready to get started again. We also support the Back to School Program, Salvation Army, Gift of Life, Jonathan Williams Performing Center, and many other organizations in the city. So on behalf of our 80 Chapter Members, we are so very appreciative of this recognition for our participation in this community for 88 years, and we want to let you know that we plan to continue for as long as Alpha Omega Omega is in existence. Thank you so very much.
Would y'all like to take a photo?
Sure, of course.
And I do have one more proclamation, and I meant to say earlier, if you are here for the purpose of a proclamation, please stay until we finish both, and I will let you know, but you're always welcome to stay. Whereas people who are elderly or have disabilities have contributed to the general welfare of Beaumont by helping to preserve customs, convictions, and traditions of many people from diverse backgrounds. And whereas these residents are vital and integral members of our society, and their wisdom and experiences have enriched our lives. And whereas abuse of the elderly and people with disabilities in domestic and institutional settings is a widespread problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people across our country. And whereas Texas Adult Protective Services in-home caseworkers in Jefferson County have completed 1,073 investigations, of which 671 cases of abuse, neglect, and/or exploitation were confirmed against our elderly Texans or those with disabilities in 2020. And whereas elder abuse is grossly under-reported because the elderly who are being abused find it very difficult to tell anyone and are usually ashamed and sometimes afraid. And whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels, all cultural and ethnic groups, whether they are in good health or incapacitated in some way, in poor neighborhoods, and in suburbia. And whereas many of the cases investigated by Adult Protective Services in Texas involves self-neglect and is our duty as citizens to reach out to people in need. And now therefore, I Becky Ames, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2021 as Elder Abuse Prevention Month in Beaumont, and urge all citizens to work together to help reduce and neglect of people who are elderly or have disabilities. Accordingly, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed, signed today, June 15th, 2021. And accepting is Alicia Jinkerson, Community Engagement Specialist with the Department of Family and Protective Services, and Mary Suarez, Supervisor of Adult Protective Services. Alicia and Mary, if y'all would like to please come forward, shake everyone's hand, and feel free to say a few words.
Thank you guys so much. Ms. Jinkerson isn't here just yet. I'm Mary Suarez. I'm the Adult Protective Services Supervisor for the Beaumont side of Jefferson County. This is Ms. Lily Boudreaux. She is our Adult Protective Services Board President, so she helps us with serving our seniors and persons with disabilities in our community. We just want to thank you guys so much for this proclamation, and we try to serve our community best we can in making sure that our elderly and people with disabilities receive the best care that's possible.
Good morning, Mayor.
Morning.
And everyone.
Afternoon.
We thank you so much. It is afternoon. I've been running all day. It is truly my honor again to stand before you on behalf of Jefferson County Adult Protective Services. Our board, of which I've been a part of now for 14 years, our purpose is to support the Adult Protective Services workers to help take care of the consumers of Jefferson County. When you look at over 100,000 persons that live in the city of Beaumont, over 200,000 in Jefferson County, and you have 13 workers, including two supervisors, who are here to meet the needs of our seniors and our persons with disabilities. It takes people like us, who are a part of the Jefferson County Board, to help support them to meet the needs of our constituents. So we're very excited and always honored to assist in any way that we can in supporting Jefferson County. We're very thankful for our APS workers. Their plates are always full. It's always more to be done. But if I leave you with nothing, I try to always make sure that I say 1-800-252-5400. If you see something, say something. If you know or you think that there is a person who may be being abused, even self-abused, exploited, neglected, even self-neglect, that is why we are here, to help them, to help our citizens of Jefferson County. So we thank you guys again for the proclamation, and as always, it's our honor to support Jefferson County.
Thank you so much, and we appreciate everything you do. That does conclude our proclamations today, so if you are here for that purpose and need to leave, now is the time to do so. However, you are always welcome to stay. Okay. All right, so I don't see it here, but we have a service awards today, don't we, I believe? Yes, go ahead, please.
Mayor, council, citizens, we're going to recognize eight or nine special employees that have 25 or more years of service when they reach those five-year increments, so...
The first employee is Danette Mickens, who runs our Customer Services Division, 25 years of service. Officer Michael McBride, Police Department, 25 years of service. Officer Stacy Landor, 25 years of service. Marcelino Garcia, 25 years of service, Streets and Drains Division. Milton Zachary. Mr. Zachary here, yes. 70 years of service, Parking and Recreation. He was Streets and Drains. He was so good, we moved him home. Kenneth Coleman, 30 years. Mr. Coleman was recently promoted to Department Director for about 34 months.
Yeah.
And helped us through the pandemic.
Sergeant Ken Carr, 35 years of service. Lieutenant Curtis Brode, 35 years of service, Police Department. Jared Smith, 25 years of service, Fire Department. We have one more lady who needs no introduction. 27 years of service.
That was a surprise. Congratulations to all of our service award recipients, and we have this every few months, and we appreciate the city employees so much and what you do. And do they have a reception or something? I didn't mean to... And that's now?
Yes.
Okay. So Civic Center Lobby, there's a reception for you and your families right across, right here. I guess y'all know where that is. All right, thank y'all so much again, but you're welcome to stay. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make comment on Scheduled Agenda Items 1 through 21, which includes the Consent Agenda and all of our general business items, if you would like to comment on one of these items and you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room, hand it to the city clerk at the front of the room. She will call out your name. We would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. If you would like to speak on one of these items and you haven't already done so, please go ahead and fill out the green slip and hand it to the officer here, and she will hand it to the city clerk.
Jess Prince, 3370 Espilonod, Beaumont, Texas, Item Number 18.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm clearly not Jess Prince. I look more like her mother. But anyway, I'm Sue Bard. I'm with the Southeast Texas Arts Council, but also with the Downtown Beaumont Cultural Arts District. Jess serves as the Board President for DVCAT. She couldn't be here at the moment, so she's asked me to speak on her behalf. She would like to voice our support of the purchase of 555 Main Street for the purpose of furthering riverfront development. As we are all aware, the planning for riverfront development has been in the works for decades. Although the challenges have been frequent and lengthy, this opportunity is needed to position us for further growth in the district. Recreational developments of this nature increase our desirability to investors, enhance our residents' quality of life, and strengthen our tourism potential. We recognize this is a benefit to local business owners as well. When we were awarded our Cultural District Designation in the fall of 2019, Texas Commission of the Arts acknowledged Beaumont's impressive inventory of cultural assets and remarked on how fantastic it would be to have use of the riverfront. We wholeheartedly agree. And improvements to our downtown area will strengthen our cultural arts community's chances of future grant awards and expand our program offerings to the community. We recognize the positive effects a downtown waterfront attraction has delivered to other cities of our size. Our Board of Directors commend you on your efforts to be forward-thinking and persistent in your goals to develop our waterfront. Your votes in favor of the acquisition are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett.
Deborah Featherland, 6770 Lexington Drive, Beaumont, Texas, Item Number 18.
It's me again. I have attended four council meetings where this has been on that agenda. All four council meetings that I've attended, this was on the agenda. There were this many people standing behind me. I understand the need for development. I really do. My cousin is the county judge in Orange County, John Gauthier. 10 years ago, he and two others had a dream to bring more business to Orange. Over lunch, they joked about having a fishing tournament. Within a year, Orange held the first bass tournament on the Sabine River. We have just that same river out here. The city of Orange did not have to spend one dime to bring what is now a multimillion-dollar tournament every year to its city. While I see what you're trying to do, and I understand your motives, I also understand we are a country governed by the people, meaning the people standing behind me. I also understand that you feel this is a good idea, and I respect that. But I also think at this time, when people still have brown water coming out of their tap, that there are other things we need to focus on than this river out here. And just as a personal opinion, anytime a government official tells me they've been working on something for decades, something's wrong. Because if it's a right fit, in the words of my grandmother, "If it's a right fit, things will fall together." Nothing has fallen together about revitalizing downtown Beaumont. I agree. It's a beautiful place. I'm in interior design. Some of these buildings are gorgeous. They really do need to be utilized. But we need to utilize the private citizens to do this, and not the government. It really needs to remember who put y'all in those seats. We, the people, not other people that have a financial reason for this to go through. We, the people, don't want to spend $4 million to tear down a building and take that money off of the tax roll. I've got only one more thing to say. May the 12th, I lost my home in a house fire. If you've got $4 million extra dollars, give it to those wonderful firemen that risk their lives to save our property every year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Featherling. Okay, before we move any further, I'm going to ask that everyone read our rules of decorum. We really need to refrain from clapping. I know this is a sensitive issue, but I'd really appreciate it so we can move through. Thank you.
Brian Neepo, 6955 Shanahan, Beaumont, Texas, Item Number 18.
Good morning, Mayor, council. Afternoon.
Afternoon.
Afternoon. Obviously, my comments are in regards to Agenda, regular Agenda Number 18, 555 Main, the AT&amp;T Building. I guess I'd like to... I guess I'd like to speak on the purpose of, not even the purpose, but choose my words carefully. About 20 years ago, Port Neches had a pipe dream to do just this. And they actually had renderings and concept plans. They were in City Hall. They were talked about all over town. It took forever. They tried to pass this, tried to pass this, tried to pass this. Nobody wanted to do it. Nobody had the vision to do it. Finally, finally, the owners of the wheelhouse came in and they did it. It was a very slow start. They took off very slowly. Nobody wanted to go downtown, pass an old park, old part of town to get to it. The same old stuff we're hearing here. It is a success. And after a groundswell of support, because citizens saw that it could be done with private money, by the way, it's been done. So they have, I've been out there, new sidewalk, lit, benches. They're building some new type of, I don't know what it's called exactly, but there's going to be a building with a bunch of different little delis, restaurant-type of things in there, more to come. That's done with city money. So private came first and built it and showed that it could be done. And once there was support for it, then there was public support for the city money. We're trying to do this backwards and use city money to gain private support. And I don't think that's the right way to do it. I just see that this has been on the block for many years. There's so many things wrong with this deal. There's no concept plan, no visual renderings. None of that's been disclosed to the public. You have many other things wrong with the deal. As far as buying a building that we had opportunity to buy two years ago or-ish did not happen, why are we revisiting this again? And even if so, even if we had overwhelming support for it, why are we spending 3% to pay an attorney to draft up a 14-page document that I can do in 15 minutes? I don't know if our city manager is competent enough to do that. But we're going to pay somebody $83,000 to do that. You know, it's about $5,900 a page. So I don't know, you do the math. And there's so many other things wrong with this that I'm sure we'll hear more from the other citizens. But it can be done right. I'm an advocate of a downtown revitalization project. I ran on it and I know that it can be done. It just needs to be done properly with the city's oversight, not an executive session. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Neepo.
Susan Rawls, 5315 Bob Street, Beaumont, Texas, item number 18.
Ms. Rawls? She's coming. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see you back there.
Well, first of all, I wanted to tell everybody hello, baby. I'm short, huh? I came today because I did find out about this last night. And my phone went off and people calling. I am very appreciative of all efforts to improve the city of Beaumont. I traveled to Suffolk all the time to go to the water park and have often wondered and even brought before as to why we did not, whether it was down here or somewhere. I know that hard work goes into any project. I first want to say that I'm so sorry of how I went public lessening. I owe you all, as the city officials, my sincerest apology. And I ask for your forgiveness and you don't have to give it. I'm just asking you for it and to anyone else that I may have offended. But I was angry, but we're not going to justify it. And after getting here, I found out that there had been some meetings that had been had and discussions on this project. I cry when I drive through Beaumont. I cry when I sit at various stops that I go to. So I want to see Beaumont revitalized, all over, all over. I would love to have a water park here because then I wouldn't have to drive to Suffolk and pay the non-resident fee because they charge you more if you don't live in Suffolk. Or all the way to Lake Charles when it's so hot. But I would ask, I know that I have not, and many of the people that have been calling me all night and all day, were not aware of some of the meetings or missed it or informed. The only thing that I can ask of you is to perhaps table it, delay it. But to spend $4 million, a billion, whatever, I don't know numbers real well and can't say the words well. At a time after COVID and the hurricanes and the storms that we have all endured and a lot of things that I still see as far as blue roofs and different roofs and homes that are not yet occupied or now red-tagged, I'm just going to ask you to consider that. That's all we can do. And we can ask that together, perhaps, we hold some other meetings, maybe. I don't know. I don't know the answer, but I know that we do need to revitalize. I know that. I also know that we must take care of what we have all around. Okay, that's my cue.
Thank you, Ms. Rawls.
I have John, and I'm not sure how to pronounce the last name, but the address is 2130 Hazel Avenue, Beaumont, Texas, item number 18. Berube, I'm so sorry, Berube.
Good afternoon, thank you all. Talking about item number 18. I do a lot of business in town, do a lot of construction. I see things going on. I've heard the concepts. Is this going to be a green space or is this going to be open to developers? If it's going to be open to developers, I'm not for it. I don't think we should be involved with clearing property and setting things up for a developer to come in. If we're opening it up for a green space, for a park, some community centers or things like that, I think it's a great idea. We need to get access to the river. And the only way to do that is tearing something down and moving things around. I think it's a wonderful idea. I don't like the way it played out during the auction and how that worked out. I think we lost a big opportunity there. But that's water under the bridge now. So if you guys really feel that this is the right direction to go in getting access to the river, then I'm all for it. I think you guys need to move forward with it. And, you know, somebody's got to have a vision. We have to work in some direction. You guys have been talking about this and fighting this and going on for on and on. And if we've got the opportunity to do it, I think we need to do it. So I appreciate your time and you all have a good afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berube.
Bruce Rice, 1045 Monterey Drive, Beaumont, Texas, item number 18.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. On item 18, I guess first off, just kind of plain and simple. It's kind of letting go of a lot of authority there for one individual to just take off and try and negotiate this item that's discussed in the executive. I'm not too sure what the big secret is, but, you know, maybe the people behind would like to know. What are we talking about? What are we dealing, what are we trying to do? Are we just, you know, plain and simple, going to go off of the whispers that we're, you know, that we're hearing on, out in our communities and not know what's supposed to be going on with apparently $4 million that we're assuming? I don't know if there's been any cost analysis as to what's involved in a bait in the building before you're going to demo it. You know, how is this going to benefit our city, you know, by making this purchase? It sounds like we're starting off in a hole. And what's the plan to recoup? How are we supposed to make that money back? Is it the people behind us? If it's the people behind us that's supposed to make up this money somehow, then what's the plan? Do we have one? You know, again, kind of going along the lines. I think perhaps some transparency on what the plan is may help, you know, ease some of the people that are concerned, some of the local taxpayers. What's the plan? What's the end goal? How long is it going to take us to recoup money? I feel strongly that, you know, this may be something that, you know, should be considered to go into a public vote. It's a good amount of money and heck, we're not certain as to what it's for. Speaker before me, is it for private, is it for public? Maybe somebody would like to know and, you know, that's why I'm here today. Just curious, not, I'm not for just throwing money out there without really knowing what's supposed to happen. I think it's a legit question. Being a purchase to a building, you know, again, we had a couple of years ago, an opportunity to buy for half the price, I'm understanding. And, well, if we're going to pay half the price, then does that mean it's doubled or tripled on the tax roll? Maybe we hold on to it for a little while and let it make some money before we go and do a purchase? Yeah, again, cost versus sale. What kind of feedback have we gotten from our community? You know, from each one of the sections, each one of the districts.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James Culbertson, 2055 Shady Lane, Beaumont, Texas, item number 18.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name's James Culbertson. So I've lived in Beaumont for 32 years and I've seen a lot of things happen. I would like to say that I'm voicing my opposition to the purchase of this building and unofficially speaking for quite a few folks that I've communicated with in the last few weeks that could not be here today. My biggest concern is there is a lack of a plan that has been communicated to the public. I agree, we've been talking about this a long time. We've had renderings and we've had drawings and we've had thoughts and we've had ideas and we've had dreams. It's not Port Neches, right? The simple integrity of our river will not support unless we make a major investment. When you look at the curve of where we're in the outer portion of that curve, and I've documented that, Port Neches is on a park. It's on a neighborhood. People are within walking distance, within biking distance. There's picnics, there's playgrounds, there's everything there. The river is a half a mile wide there. Straight away to the north for a mile. Straight away to the south for a mile, right? When that floodwater comes ripping around that corner right here, it's going to chew away those people that haven't been here for 35 years, 32 years. How much space is missing off of that river? Probably 30 feet is gone, never to be recovered without big money, right? I'm just saying, I think we need a plan. I appreciate, Councilman Felsch, I appreciate your response to my emails. And you said the council cannot ask the public for every expenditure. I think when you're talking about the magnitude of money, not just this building, but what the plan is, I think the public ought to have a vote. I think it ought to be put forth with some bigger picture, right? The word is, it's a done deal. I'll just tell these folks here, credible sources tell me it's a done deal. We can get up here and we can talk and four, five, or six of you are going to vote to buy the building, right? So sad, too bad. That's how I took your email to me, right? So sad, too bad. It's a done deal. And that's very unfortunate because I feel like we deserve a right to decide the future of what happens with taxpayer money, right? Somebody else can say all the things that are wrong with the city. Streets, sewer, pick something, drainage, infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Y'all know all those. They're not for me to remind you. I would just say, so real quickly, there's a copy of the contract out there, right? With signatures and no dates. I would ask, what is the validity of that copy of that contract?
Thank you, Mr. Culbertson.
Tracy Bellard, Orlion, 6050 Chisholm Trail, Beaumont, Texas, item number 18.
I have a different, it's not really a perspective. It's more of a different block to the Jenga building that we're building here with all these emotions and valid points. My contribution to all this is to ask that we, I don't know what's going on. I don't know the numbers. I just know that I've been living here all my life. And as an adult, I see things a little bit different. And I know that everybody won't be happy with every decision. There's no way in the world to make all of us happy. But I would hope that whoever decides to do what, that they would have a right to make that decision, whether or not you agree with it, if you're right to agree or not. I'm hoping that we can work together in the sandbox and build something, whatever that may be, without the animosity, without the anger, without being, "Oh, you don't do what I want, so I'm mad." I've learned the hard way by watching other people, not being of a little more virtue than that. But I've learned the hard way that when you point fingers and when you talk loudly, no one is paying any attention. But when you come together, you listen to me, I listen to you, we might be able to find a middle point and we might not. But guess what? When it rains, it's going to hit me too. When the sun comes up, I'm going to burn up too, just like you. So what I would hope, because these people do have valid points. I am not a construction owner. I don't know nothing about infrastructure. But I will say, there's been many things I've been told can't be done. I can't help children. I won't graduate, you know, "Oh, you can't because of this. Oh, you can't because of that." I have proved all those people wrong. So if you're coming up with why we can't, I would like to spend as much effort in figuring out why we can. I'm done, y'all.
Thank you, ma'am. I very appreciate you once more.
Mike, and I cannot read the last name. The address is 710 Monterey Drive, Beaumont, Texas, item number 18. What's the last name? Okay.
Most of you know me because you've always gotten emails from me and I appreciate your responses to those emails. I'm here to talk about item number 18. I have a master's degree in city planning. I was familiar with the original plan many years, decades ago, when it came out. I'm in favor of the restoration of Riverfront Park if we can figure out how to solve the flooding problem. I am against the purchase of the AT&amp;T Building. I believe that long-range plans are good, but the plan needs to be suited to Beaumont. And we're not Port Neches and Port Neches is not Beaumont. As other men mentioned, there's a lot of differences between our environment and their environment. I also want to remind the council that I applaud the council for many years ago getting rid of... almost all the railroad tracks, but I believe we still have one railroad track that separates the river from the property. And again, that's not the Port Neches situation. In my opinion, if a developer wants to, uh, develop the river, they're welcome to do it in conjunction with the riverfront property owners. That could always be done. Uh, city funds need to be used for the most pressing issues which already have been listed. The safe, clean drinking water system that doesn't flood, which you've heard from me before. The sewage system that does not back up and the property, uh, people's property that will drain and not flood. I urge the council to vote, vote against this resolution or to let the citizens decide if this item is more important than the issues I've listed. Uh, thank you for the, your consideration of the matter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming today.
And Joseph Trahan, eighty-one thirty-five Quail Hollow, Beaumont, Texas, item number eighteen.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here today to speak in favor of the acquisition of five-five-five Main Street, commonly known as the AT&T Center, excuse me, building. It is my sincere belief that reclaiming our city's waterfront and building off of its heritage will complement the existing facilities and structures currently in place downtown. Scenic walkways, better lighting, sidewalks, trails, green spaces and greater pedestrian access are a step in the right direction. Cities across the nation have successfully utilized their natural water resources and continue to establish more significant economic development than our own. The Neches River is an asset to downtown and our city ought to be more involved in its future growth. Many major cities across our country have invested significantly in public realm improvements and many have plans in place for future development without private funds to jumpstart it. Private investors are an essential aspect of development. I understand that many interested parties are waiting to see whether or not the city will show their support in backing of riverfront development. Private investors don't want to go it alone. I believe this council should take the initiative and show our communities entrepreneurs that we don't just talk about the quality of life improvements and diversity in economic development, but walk the walk in reducing the existing barriers in place that stifle private investment. Thousands upon thousands of Beaumont residents have enjoyed Becky's Ditch, known as the event center, the Jefferson Theater, Civic Center, Julie Rogers Theater, and all the quality of life improvements via entertainment led by Lenny Caballero and now Emily Wheeler. Our city has invested tens of millions of dollars in improvements to streets and drainage in the last few years. You voted recently to add thirteen million dollars to improve existing infrastructure. In addition to what is already being spent, dedicating funds to improve streets and drainage and investing in riverfront development shouldn't be mutually exclusive. We can do both, walk and chew gum at the same time. Other cities do it, why can't we? On a separate note, I want to thank Councilman A.J. Turner for renewing interest in city government and getting people excited about the civic process. You have courage and conviction. We need more of it on this bench. I am proud to have voted for you and I hope you will continue leading from the front. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Trahan.
Ava Graves, ten ninety Roberts Avenue, Beaumont, Texas, item number eighteen.
Good afternoon, City Council, Mayor, staff, residents of Beaumont. I'm Ava Graves. I am, uh, resident of Ward Three under the awesome Odwin Samuel. Let's talk about tourism. Globally, travel and tourism's direct contribution to the GDP was approximately two-point-nine trillion U.S. uh, dollars in twenty nineteen. The U.S. travel tourism industry contributed the largest sum at five-hundred-and-eighty-point-seven billion U.S. dollars. Texas tourism is an eighty-plus-billion-dollar industry. Beaumont tourism generated three-hundred-and-ten million-plus dollars during a global pandemic. Only ten percent less than the previous year. Travel tourism generated four-point-seven billion dollars in state taxes. Without travel spending, Texas households would pay an extra seven-hundred-and-sixty dollars more in state and local taxes annually. Tourism translates into spending, direct spending, direct employment, direct earnings and direct tax receipt, receipts. Yet there is more to this picture. It is more than revenue. It's about relationships, making memories and creating traditions. Traditions lead to repeat visits. Travelers consider many factors, including affordability, accessibility, attractions, amenities and accommodations. The major reasons people go on vacation, according to why people vacation, is to build and strengthen relationships. The number one reason is to be together as a family, also to seek social interactions and a time for making new friends. At rest and relaxation, adventure, gain of knowledge and special occasions, these factors translate into the well-being of the traveler. The revenue generated is a byproduct of these meaning, lasting and repeated experiences. Join me in putting on your believer's imagination caps for just a moment. Imagine travelers cruising off of I-ten into beautiful downtown Beaumont, exiting onto beautiful Willow with its lovely green space and the welcome sign. The travel turns onto Calder, which guides them smack dab into the most magnificent, largest fire hydrant you've ever seen. And if there are children in that car, they're gonna demand that you stop. And for the adults, they're gonna see that as an opportunity as a photo op or selfie op. I witnessed that today as I was driving downtown and I stopped at the Fire Museum as a couple from Houston had just stopped by to take photos. That's just the beginning, and I'm closing. Now, now they're on Main Street, on the riverfront and walking distance of restaurants, museums, murals, the library and boat cycles for rent and so much more. And that's just within the first ten minutes of their arrival. Wow, what a great way to start a vacation. And you council members and we citizens, we are a part of that, of making our residents and our travelers, uh, well-being. I'm feeling really good about it and I bet you are too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graves.
Thomas TJ Rodman, twenty ninety-five McFadden Avenue, Beaumont, Texas, item number eighteen.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is TJ Rodman. Most of you know me. Uh, I'm a member of Ward One, Taylor Nichols District, who I count as a friend. I'd like to thank you guys for dropping so much money into infrastructure very recently. Uh, I think you don't get enough credit for that and we haven't heard enough about that today. But today I want to talk about something a little bit different revolving around, uh, agenda item number eighteen. Um, it has been said that the tragedy of the human race is politics. Nothing is more obvious, it is politics that foments all this hate and division between people. Now, especially is not the time to play politics. When we have so much at stake and too many opportunities for growth. As leaders, we are, are to strike a difficult balance that may not win us any favor, but allow us not to miss any opportunities for growth towards prosperity. The current proposal for five-five-five Main Street, much like it was addressed nearly three years ago, has brought the division back to the chambers. It has members of this body branded as traitors to their political party based on the idea that it's better to build bridges rather than walls. This is not how leadership is to be treated and/or operate. It's intimidation. Juvenile schoolyard bullying has no place in these proceedings where we require level-headed, mature and respectful individuals that will lead from the front and be the first to lay the brick in the much-needed bridges that this divided city needs. Be like the councilman who leads by example and lifts people up. Be like the city councilman who uses his faith and his vision to bring together one city. Be like the city councilman who leads from the front and tells people they're too damn smart for their own good. To summarize, let me leave you with this and urge you to understand and heed it. We can divide the river's flow and subsequently channel its splintered force in any way that our selfish agendas might compel us. However, it ends, it all ends up in the sea, for although the river's power might be diminished by such meddling, its destination is not. And on this mutual journey to the sea of prosperity, might we as citizens remember the mighty river that we are? And in remembering that, may we soundly reject those who would selfishly divide our unity in order to prompt, prompt us to lesser seas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rodman.
Ladonna Sherwood Haley, fifty-two sixty-five Richard Drive, Beaumont, Texas, item number eighteen.
Good evening.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm super excited about the river development. Um, we are aware of all of the issues that Beaumont is facing, but let's get real. Several of the citizens of Beaumont are asking, why is there nothing to do? Why is Beaumont so boring? Why don't we have anything on the riverfront? Why is there nowhere to go? We know that change is hard, but change is inevitable. And it is time to step up our game and step out of our comfort zone. As a community, we have to be more proactive in the movements that we are taking to maintain the people that live here and draw more people here. Beaumont has been reacting instead of getting out in front of the challenges that we are facing. The ultimate objective is a better Beaumont, a more fun Beaumont, a more appealing Beaumont, an increase in overall lifestyle. As a business owner, I know that scarred money don't make no money. So let's get the questions answered and let's get the project started. I'm full support of developing the riverfront.
Thank you, Ms. Haley.
Um, Gregory Mark Adams, thirty-five ninety-eight Abbey Lane, Beaumont, Texas. I think number eighteen, item eighteen.
It can be.
Okay.
Uh, Dear Ames, uh, Manager Hayes, uh, council members, I'd like to begin saying to, uh, uh, to Mayor Ames, thank you so much for your years of service. We appreciate it and, uh, we're just very appreciative of all you've done for our city, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Ladies and gentlemen, we live in a great city. Beaumont comprises the best of many things, food, natural resources and commerce. The best thing about southeast Texas is its people. We have a can-do spirit that breathes success and the people of our area are the friendliest of all the nation, if not the world. However, there is one question that always comes up in conversations with other residents and that is, why hasn't Beaumont reached its potential? A couple of months ago, I sat with Councilman Neal to express my concern regarding the untapped possibilities of Beaumont. Our area has great potential, but it seems as if we can never reach the pinnacle of our dreams and aspirations. I believe one reason for this is complacency. As a licensed professional counselor associate, I see in the lives of marriages where the couple naturally grows apart because they become content and lazy. A marriage is the toughest job anyone will ever have because it takes work. Well, so does growing a city. It's hard work and I congratulate you as leaders on the strides you have made. But the time is now to dream and dream big. Our church moved out of downtown Beaumont eight years ago to make a new, fresh start. Not all believed in our vision and many left our church body. The decision was hard, bold and frankly, very scary. But we knew it was the right thing to do for the success of our church. And because we stuck to our guns, we are healthier now, making a great impact on the lives of people in Beaumont. You, the council, are on a precipice of greatness and now is the time to plan for our future. A future that you might not even get to experience yourselves. Will it be hard? Yes. Will it be scary and frustrating? Of course. But the alternative is not an option. We can no longer sit and wait for something good to happen. We must make it happen. The Bible states that a man cannot put his hand to the plow and look backwards. I implore each of you to sternly look toward the future. My wife and I love to travel and we seem to gravitate to places that offer us a local flair, a window, so to speak, and to the heart of the places we visit. Beaumont needs its flair. As I told Councilman Neal and others, when people pass over the Purple Heart Memorial Bridge, they need to look left or right and say, wow, I've gotta stop there. If you're going to dream about Beaumont, please dream big. Lastly, I have a slogan for Beaumont. It's called, "I'm Lovin' Beaumont." Love it with me and let's meet our potential. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, sir, Mr. Adams.
And Dr. Japira Levine, three fifty Pine, Fort, uh, Beaumont, Texas, item number eighteen.
Good evening, or good afternoon, rather. My name is Dr. Japira Levine. I am a, I was born and raised here in Beaumont, Texas. I graduated from Westbrook High School. Of all the cities I've lived in, I went to University of Texas, I did medical school at Temple University in Philadelphia. I trained at the Harvard Hospital in Boston and I trained at the University of Chicago. And I'm not saying all that to top my education. I'm saying all that to say, of all the places that I could have lived, I decided to come back home. I wanted to be of service to my community. I have an excellent skill and I wanted to serve my community. Not only my brother, Dr. Masanthi Levine, came back to this community in order to be of service to the residents. I am a business owner, three fifty Pine in Edison Plaza. I chose to move in Edison Plaza because it was the premier office space here in Beaumont, Texas. Not only does the owners invest in their property, they invest in their tenants. As a result of moving to this area or to Edison Plaza, my business has increased by thirty-five percent. Not only do the patients who come into my office are able to look over the Neches River, they are enamored. They are enamored to see the city in such heights, in such glory. And as a person who's from this community, it gives me great pleasure to be able to provide them with that scenery. In addition, of all the cities that I have lived in, Beaumont or downtown is actually where people like to go. It's not anywhere else. Of those cities, those areas are developed and they've invested money into that. So I am actually in support of eighteen. Um, I think that it would be an asset to this community. Not only has it been an asset to me, myself and five other physicians are in Edison Plaza and we have seen a drastic increase in our business, not only because it's downtown, but because it provides them an opportunity to see the city in a different light. In addition, I chose Edison Plaza. I did not want to bring my services to the West End. And the reason being is because most healthcare professionals are on that side of town. I wanted to be able to service the communities of South Park, the North End, and the Pear Orchard, where my parents built a house. And so in doing that, I wanted to remain on this side of town, which is why Edison Plaza was also an asset. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Levine.
Nicholas Hunter, ninety-one fifty-five Meats, I think that's Meats Tribe, Beaumont, Texas, item number eighteen.
Mayor, Council, this is intimidating. Okay, so I don't have anything prepared. I didn't have time to write a speech. I was in the woodlands this morning. I started business about two years ago when I got fired from Classic Chevrolet. Now, I make videos for a living, but in the past six months, I haven't actually sat down to make a video because I've had to hire people. Now, I hadn't been able to hire people in Beaumont. I made like listings and put up job applications, but I've hired people from all over the country to do the work that I'm doing in southeast Texas. So I think that the reason I said that, and the whole reason I came to this meeting is because I had a conversation with some of my friends from high school, some people that I graduated with, people that I were really close with. These were the kids that were in the honors classes. I graduated with honors from Westbrook. I was a National Merit Black Scholar and I've lived in Beaumont my whole life. I've tried to support my family by starting my own business. I've worked for other people. And with the amount of money that you guys are going to take and put into this building to turn it into a parking lot, I urge you to realize what that can do for your community. I mean, you've got towns like Flugerville that are outside of Austin and are literally giving away money for people to start businesses, for doing the things that I'm trying to do. I had to go look at spaces in the woodlands because it would make more sense for me to pay three times as much for a space closer to Houston than it would be here in southeast Texas. Like, we have exports, we've got oil. I don't know how much XR Mobile's supposed to pay in taxes or does pay in taxes to the city of Beaumont, but they operate in this city. I mean, we have businesses that can support all the infrastructure that we want. I don't understand how it works. I don't understand all the budgets. All that stuff's over my head. There's plenty, plenty of people that have talked up here that have way more information than I even have the time to gather. But I know that that amount of money actually put to use in a way that not only helps the businesses that are already succeeding here, but to bring new businesses here, I mean, like, we can't be a city that prides itself on tourism when over the last year, you've seen that you can do pretty much any job from anywhere in the world. So if we make a city that the entire infrastructure is built around tourism, well, global pandemic- So if we make a city that the entire infrastructure is built around tourism, well, global pandemic shut you down again. Then we got a capital fund where we have dog parks that we can build two years ago that now we can't build this year. Like, I've had to start my own charitable organization just so we could raise funds to have money to say, hey, I want a dog park here. Here's the lane for the city. Here's the money. What's the problem? So that's what we're working on in the community right now, and to see you guys take millions of dollars to turn a building that was a beacon for infrastructure, it was an AT&amp;T building. Like, that's what, my mom worked at the AT&amp;T building like back in the eighties or whenever she was like before me. I don't know. But my mom worked, Ms. Moore was sitting right there. Ms. Moore was the mayor, actually the president of the Postal Workers Union when I was growing up. I only know that because my mom was the treasurer, and I was being babysit at their, in San Antonio. Anyway, look, that's a lot of money. There's probably something better we can do with it. So just do that before y'all go into the executive session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter.
Addie Allen, ninety-six ninety-five, Grass, Beaumont, Texas. There are several different items that she wants to speak on, Mayor.
Say the name again, please.
Addie Allen.
Oh, okay.
My name is Addie Allen. Good afternoon, Mayor, city manager, council members, new council members, and all of the persons that run the city. I'm standing before you not on eighteen. I'm standing before you on some issues I've talked about before. One that's very troubling to me, I stand Amelia, and we have planes flying over us three o'clock in the morning, six o'clock in the morning, ten o'clock at night. And I'm just wondering, I've asked before, what's going on at the municipal airport. Now, the thing that I would like to know is, because it's on the agenda, there are several lease agreements. There's been planes that's gone down in different areas of the state. If a plane goes down in our neighborhood, who's going to hold us harmless? You know, it's nothing, it's okay if you can afford a plane. But bottom line, if the city is going to give lease agreements, let's bring the citizens in and assure us that we'll be all right if one of them go down. It's funny, the other day I was outside, and I literally ducked because one came down so low. So nobody has answered me, but Councilman Getz invited me over to the airport. I'm not interested in coming. All I want to know is what's going to happen to us if something happens in that can. The other thing is, why does it take so long for a water main to be approved? We're in the hurricane season, and the bid on Sabine and Pennsylvania has gone down more than once. When Amelia was here, we were told that at the beginning of this year, hurricane, we wouldn't have to worry about it, that the city was going to act because of the flooding. I don't live in the North End, but I feel sorry for them because every time it rains and there's something out there in the Gulf now, those people go through pain. I probably will soon. Now, at the airport, I'm vassalat going back and forth. At the airport, a ditch was cleaned, you know, and made nice. There's been two people come before council. I'm in that same neighborhood where they have sewer that comes up when it rains hard. And what was, one of the staff members said, well, we're going to tear up and put pipe down or something. At that time, we'll address it. Why do citizens have to wait? We pay taxes. What seems to be the problem? I'm running out of time, but I wanted to know about this sixteen point five million American Rescue Plan. Why is money being used for streets when it's for contact tracing, education? That's so important. We don't give statistics anymore, but those things could and should be addressed. And why don't we hire-
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
-at the city of Beaumont instead of using temporary personnel?
Thank you, Ms. Allen. And I would like to remind everyone, now is the time to speak for any item on our agenda, number one through seven, I'm sorry, one through twenty-two. If you're here to speak on any other item, I will open up the microphone at the end of our general business for that purpose. But right now, please state which item you would like to speak on, and you're welcome to do so.
Patsey Gidry, twenty-four fifteen West Calder Road, Beaumont, Texas, item number eighteen.
Good afternoon, everyone. The other speakers that have been before me were much more knowledgeable on all the different optics and things that should be discussed, but with some of my priorities are, and with others within our, my friends and relatives, I just think that it's seriously not the right thing to do to spend several million dollars from the running day fund to purchase the AT&amp;T dilapidated building where there are so many projects within the city that need to be addressed. Has the city of Beaumont Water Department system been completely repaired and replaced? So that citizens that will not have to be without water or have to boil water? The water drainage in our city is simply horrible. Has that issue been addressed and resolved? The streets in our city are in terrible condition. Where does the city stand on getting those repairs completed? Would it not be in the best interest of the city of Beaumont to have more adequate funds available to cover any expenses that could occur due to the fact that the national weather forecast has advised us there's a strong possibility that our area could experience severe weather this hurricane season? We already have something brewing in our Gulf right now, and I think that serious consideration should be undertaken to think about providing places for our homeless, our veterans, our senior citizens. When we had the freeze in February, many of our citizens had no place to go, no place to find warmth, no place to find safety, no place to find food. And I would like to commend Allison and Mike Getz for seeking that out when none of the other ones of you seem to be interested in taking care of that issue. I think that we all need to work together to make our city a better place to live for everyone involved. And I don't, I think actually, in my opinion, spending that kind of money right now after our nation, our world, our state has undergone the pandemic that we've gone through, I'm not terribly sure that we're over, that we're past that. So we need to keep our minds open and address issues. We certainly didn't know what we were facing when this happened. None of us have ever been through something like that before. But we need to think about taking care of our people before we consider spending that kind of money to buy a building that's dilapidated, that we have to continue to spend money on. And right now, I don't think it's the time to do it. I would appreciate your table. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gidry.
Christine Crawford, twenty-five forty-five Harrison, Beaumont, Texas, item number eighteen.
Hello. I'd like to state in the beginning that I began working with Mr. Penland, Mr. Umfree, Mr. Flanagan with the Crockett Street Development in nineteen ninety-nine with some of you that's here on the council and some of you as friends at that time. I also own property in downtown myself, so I'm obviously going to be very passionate about this issue. I come before you here today to thank you for considering to take a very bold step in developing our riverfront. Our city was founded on the very land that you're talking about developing, so to speak. It was born at the Tevis Square, you know, where there's the little sign that says, this is where the city was founded a hundred and eighty-some years ago, right here on the bank of the Nature's River. So in a way, the way I look at it, this is kind of your chance with, to help with the rebirth of our city. This is the real big jump step that we need. All cities on riverfronts, whether they be rivers, lakes, oceans, the Gulf of Mexico, they all feature their waterway, but we don't. And unfortunately, the Nature's River was hidden all those years ago because of industry, because of the port, because of some of the refineries, the ship building complex. We weren't able to ever develop our downtown in this area because we had those railroads. But now they're ninety percent moved, and it's a different time now. And so now you have the chance to take the big step that's been much needed, that couldn't be taken before. I know someone said earlier, like, you've been talking about this for a long, why didn't you do it? Sometimes it's timing. I understand that you also just now got awarded money, federal money, not local money. You've got federal money to fix the eroded land that was damaged by the hurricane. So this is a timing issue. This is all coming together at the same time, and it's something that's needed. I urge all council members to please invest. It's, I don't see it as a waste of taxpayer money. I see it as an investment in our city that will return the quality of life that our citizens so desperately need. It'll bring the tourism dollars that we've spoken about, and it'll hopefully bring new families and keep the families that we have here already. If this is done, I know all of Beaumont will prosper, the South End, the North End, West End, everywhere, because this has been proven over and over and over in all cities that focus on their waterfronts in the United States. You know, there's a misconception that the city owns Crockett Street. I know y'all get a lot of flack. Why don't y'all open it? How come you have it empty? Why did you build it and you've abandoned it? A lot of people think that, but it's private developers that developed Crockett Street and put their own money into it. And there's other private developers. There's young people like Josh Cavett, who's recently bought a couple of buildings downtown. There's Dr. Heiner, who owns the Suggas Building. There's, you know, thirty of us that own property downtown, and we're really, we cannot get business in our buildings, and we cannot lease the spaces that we have unless, I'd like to ask to continue, please.
If it's just quickly, please.
Okay, well, it's public-private partnership. People say, why don't private developers come in here and develop it? It has to be public and private. Every city, it's public and private. You can't just depend, depend on them. The museums will prosper if there's more traffic, there's more culture, things that people said. I'm glad that the city approached Mr. Flanagan to acquire the building. Again, for all these reasons, I think it'd be great to have the green space. I know that he was extremely happy because this is exactly what has been talked about for thirty years. You know, it was twenty-two years ago that Kyle was Assistant City Manager, Pete Shelton, myself. We went to the Woodlands to the Waterfront Development Corporation. They built their own water feature. We have one. We have a nice one. Why can't we invest and continue to do our infrastructure? Again, I do want to thank you also for voting all the millions of dollars on the sewer and drainage. But this, like was said before, it can all happen again. We talked about-
I'm sorry, Ms. Crawford. I'm going to have to ask you because it's not fair to everyone else.
Okay, well, this is long overdue.
If you want to, if you want to just make your final quick, 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 quick.
I also, I think it's misfortunate, even some of the people that I talked to in the lobby today before, they're against it, but a lot of people have some misconceptions of why they're against it. So I do hope that there's public dialogue so that these questions can be answered. I'm telling you from my heart, I'm not being negative, a lot of people, they truly have the wrong information. So if we can all talk about this and get the right information, I know that many, many people would change their mind, and that a majority of our citizens would be for this. Please take that big step. This is catalytic move. This is the time to do it now.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford.
Tom Flanagan, five ninety-five Orleans, Beaumont, Texas, item number eighteen.
Good afternoon.
Yes, sir.
Miss Mayor and council members, city manager, thank you for letting me talk for just a few minutes. And I was thinking about what I wanted to say, and I might take five minutes. I don't know if I'm going to get cut off or not.
Well, I really have to stop you at three unless the council wants you to continue. That's our rules.
There's a quote that someone gave me when I was young and thought I was smart that said, by Teddy Roosevelt, that people don't care about what you know. They, they want to know what, how much you care. And everything that I talk about myself, if it sounds like myself, it's because I care and love this city. And it's obvious from your service that each of you love the city, and it's obvious from the tremendous speakers that we have. There's a lot of love for this city. I'm here to spoke, to speak in support of moving our city forward in a major way today. For those of you who don't know me, I have worked for over thirty years on downtown revitalization. We have saved over eleven buildings from certain demolition and made them points of pride in our community, which they deserve to be. I've had the pleasure of working together with tremendous men who have believed, and women, who have believed in downtown Beaumont and worked tirelessly toward the same goals and invested heavily. And I want to mention particularly Walter Umfree and Joe Penland and Christina Crawford, who have done so much for our community. Walter, Joe, Christina, myself are all outsiders to Beaumont, in a sense, from South County. And we have always looked at Beaumont as the big city, full of opportunity. You know, the old adage, a glass, is a glass half-full or is it half-empty? Well, we always looked at it as half-full. And coming from South County, we understood better than many in Beaumont did at the time that if the center of the city dies, the city, the rest of the city goes with it. We worked really hard and invested based on our belief in the future of the city of Beaumont, but we haven't done enough. During the last twenty-five years, to be honest, downtown has been stagnant. Some progress, some steps back. One step forward, two steps back, so to say. And there has been no real group in the city, not city government, not a Chamber of Commerce, not the Beaumont Main Street, or a group of businessmen or civic or cultural leaders that have really been carrying the banner for downtown, and that is sad, and that's what we need today. That's what we're here to talk about. Our city has not participated in the tremendous growth in the state of Texas, but instead suffered population loss and population shifts. Just this morning, Beaumont Enterprise, major business story, Lumberton's opening its largest subdivision ever. Does anybody in this room have any question that that's going to be filled with newcomers to southeast Texas? Where do you think they're going to fill that subdivision? I think we all know what their target is. They've been very successful. Please bear with me because this is important. More importantly, we continue to lose our young people every year. We lose our best and brightest because of the perceived lack of opportunity in our area and our city. Our schools are really struggling despite the hundreds of devoted and dedicated teachers. Growing crime is a problem that if it's not placed in check, will devastate our city and population. When you look around the country at successful cities, large, medium, and small, in almost every single instance, there is a common denominator, and that is they have focused on their central city, revitalization. I know that each of you council members have witnessed this, as well as every-
I object to this continuation. Seventeen people have talked, nobody's gotten it-
Sir, sir, if you will, please. I told the council, it's the council's decision, and I told them, when he said he needed five minutes, I said I would go along with it unless the council objected. I've not heard any objections, if there are.
But how many times have we heard it said, and many in this room have said it, and you know what I'm about to say?
I was polite to you, be polite to me. Please. Thank you.
How many times have we in this room-
Is there any objection? I want to ask. Okay, go ahead, please.
How many times have we in this room have heard it said, and maybe some of us would admit that we have said, we can't do that here. It can't happen here, or somebody else has to do it. Well, today, we are here to consider this question. Is the city of Beaumont really inferior to every other city in the country? I don't think so. We have been blessed with a downtown that contains many architectural gems, historical buildings which deserve to be restored and brought back to life. We have a riverfront that has not yet been utilized. We have major traffic arteries in I-ten and Martin Luther King that are connected to downtown. Every part of southeast Texas is easily reachable within a few minutes from downtown. There is no more beautiful or attractive area in all of southeast Texas, yet downtown today, half the buildings are empty and have been empty for decades. The streets in some places are crumbling and leaking water, and there is really not a plan to move forward until today. Connecting Beaumont's downtown to the waterfront would be one of the most positive steps that can happen in our community. In my opinion, and the city planners and architects and developers that I've spoken to from all over the country, it is a must, and we must do it if we're going to preserve our city and our population. And we should not stop there. We must begin the process of pulling together our community and focusing on this treasure that we have downtown, which has been so long ignored. We must dream big and begin the planning process. For all of the lack of progress that we've made, it can all change, and I think it is changing today. And I want to say that many people, there has been so much negativity in the press that's come out from this whole affair, which is untrue. Lies have been said about a lot of people, including people sitting here that serve our city today. And I don't believe that the majority of the people, even those, and I noticed we have quite a few from- And I don't believe that the majority of the people, even those, and I notice we have quite a few from the comfortable west end, so say, I don't believe they don't care about our city. I think that's untrue. Even people in the so-called comfortable areas of our city, and we are a divided city, are not immune to the rest of the city's decline. But they don't want our city to decline. They're not a bunch of closed-minded people, but good people. They know that our city has not grown-
Mr. Flanagan, are you almost through?
One minute.
Okay.
They know that our city has not grown, and if we do not grow and address the problems we're faced with, we have no future. One common reason that we live here is the good and diverse people, and as I said earlier, I refuse to believe that we are inferior as a city. I want to thank the city council for their support in moving forward and making downtown Beaumont everything it should be. Even though you have been publicly criticized, which I think is so sad, I admire and respect. I've been in your position before, and I respect you for your service and your love of this community and standing in there. You are showing courage to support in supporting this move. We are proud to work with you, and we are pledging our continued cooperation. We have a lot more that we would like to do, and we hope other developers will join us with the city in making this long-awaited dream come true. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. Is there a citizen who wishes to speak? Ms. Bressor?
I'm sorry, no, ma'am.
Okay. I'm gonna close the floor. As I mentioned earlier, I will open up the microphone at the general, at the end of our general business for any comment that you would like to make that aren't on our agenda. So with that said, council, I believe that Councilmember Neale has asked that we pull number ten from the consent agenda because he needs to abstain, and so I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda, less item number ten.
I move to approve, except item ten.
Thank you, council member. Is there a second?
Just a second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval of all items on the consent agenda, except number ten. I'll entertain a motion now for item number, yes, did you have a question? Go ahead, please.
Are we opening up for discussion?
Yes.
Okay, so, I've been here on council for ten years now, and I don't recall, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't recall having airport hangar leases coming before council in the past for approval. Is this something new, or is this something that we've done before?
Something we do all the time.
We have had airport hangar leases coming before the council for approval?
Every year.
Okay, so, the leases that are contained herein are not complete in a lot of respects. Is there some information that are, that is missing, or are we being asked to vote on something that is not complete?
Can you be more specific?
Sure. There's leases in here that do not describe the aircraft, it doesn't describe the square footage of the hangar.
Yeah, we never, we never, we normally don't put the aircraft in the lease agreement. This is based on the square footage of one large hangar out at the airport, and so they're paying a certain price per, per square foot.
Okay. Do we have any idea how this pricing compares to hangar leases at other airports?
Can I respond to that? The, the hangar prices at Beaumont Municipal are higher than anywhere else around here. The prices on these, for these, these big hangar leases, it's simple. The smaller, the smaller dollar amounts are for single-engine, the bigger dollar amounts are for twin engines, and then the other one is for helicopters.
Because of the size.
Because of sizes.
Okay. This is information I didn't have, so that's why I'm asking, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Okay, all, all in favor of the motion, did I already do that? Yes, please, I'm sorry, I did not see you, I apologize.
Item number five, um, let me look at the map. On that, he was off by almost twenty-two bucks, but it's off.
Quote from the Denver, Mr. Speaker, for the resolution, it's off at twenty-one dollars and ninety-one cents. We appreciate him catching that, so we could get that number in the resolution, we appreciate it.
Yeah, we corrected. All right, thank you. Anything else? All right, there's a motion and a second on the floor for approval of the consent agenda, less item number ten. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Now, I'll entertain a motion, please, on number ten.
So moved.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor for approval of number ten, and there is a second. Is there any discussion, questions, comments? Okay, all in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. One abstention?
Abstain.
And any nays? Okay, the motion passes with one extension, extension, sorry. Okay, that concludes our consent agenda, and so now we will move on to number eighteen, please.
Mayor and council, number eighteen is to consider authorizing the execution of all documents necessary to acquire the building and property located at five-five-five Main Street. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you at this time.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I do want to make a comment before we open up for comments. And I have more to say, but I'm gonna ask for a motion on this.
I so moved for approval.
Asking for a motion for a table? Are you approving?
I move for a motion to approve, item eighteen.
Okay, um, my comment is, is that I am asking for a motion to table. Is there a motion to table?
Yes, Mayor, I commend you for your bold vision to develop downtown Beaumont.
But I do have some comments, if you will, please let me do that.
And your wisdom in requesting to table this issue until after the election. In response to that, I move that we table the vote concerning the purchase of the property at five-fifty-five Main Street, item number eighteen, until an unspecified date following the election of Beaumont's new mayor.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, there's a-
I do believe there was a motion prior to your motion.
I didn't make one.
You, you made, you made the motion.
I didn't.
Who made the motion?
Councilmember. I called for a motion for a table. Do you want to dis, is there a dispute there?
I've never, yes, I've never heard there be a call for a specific disposition of the motion.
If you don't mind, I could say why, but I've not had that opportunity.
Yes, would you explain to me why?
I will. Was there a second?
Second.
Okay, all right. I did not want to make any comments in any discussion until I had a motion and a second on the floor. These are the rules the council adopted, not me. I was not for this part of the adoption of these rules. But that is what the council adopted, so I was trying to follow the will of the council. So, with that said, I do appreciate the input of both sides of this issue. However, I do not want anyone in this room, anyone, and I don't want any misconceptions out there of why I want to do this. The reason I'm asking the council to do this is because I am so passionate about this project, and I have been for many years. And I question how everything has come about on this issue, but I'm not gonna get into that for now. What I want to do is to let you know that I'm so passionate about it that I trust, from the meetings that we have had, we don't vote in executive session. We come to a consensus. And it's my opinion that the majority of the council is very much in favor of this. They can speak for themselves. However, because of recent events, things that are said on social media, they're incorrect. I heard everything from a parking lot today. That is, everybody knows that's not, was ever even talked about. So, what I, my hope is, if these council members that sit with me today, those of, those of you that are in favor of this, which my last count was around six, if that was correct, that we don't vote in executive session, I want to make that clear, is that you bring this out very rapidly to the public and let everyone know what the truth is and what our plans are. I'm so passionate about this project that I don't want to mar the project. And there are people out there that are saying that I made this happen before I left, so I could get my way. That is the farthest thing from the truth. I had nothing to do with the negotiations with Mr. Flanagan. Didn't even know it was gonna happen till it was happening. I was happy about it, don't get me wrong. I'm not putting anybody down about it. I'm very pleased that there was an agreement that was made. And, but I know how things are in social media. I know how things are when there's perception out there that is really not true, but perception sometimes is, is taken as the truth. And I don't want it to become where Mayor Ames pushed this through two weeks. Some of the news media has even said that, two weeks before, that Mayor Ames pushed this through two weeks before she was gone, just to get her way. Because I believe that the majority of the council up here wants this as much as I do, as much as those of you who talked today. But I know how things work, and sometimes things can't be successful if it's marred for any reason. And there is no way I want to be a part of this project not being successful. But secondly, some people out there may say, "Well, you know, she left it for the next mayor. It's a cop-out." Absolutely not true. I'm gonna look everybody in the face. Anybody that says that doesn't know what they're talking about. I would love to vote yes on this today. Make no, I'm not making any qualms about it. Those of you who are against it, I understand. I respect that, totally respect it. But I would love to vote on this today. I would love to see it come to fruition. I wanted it, I would, I did spearhead it yes two years ago, absolutely. I was one of the council members that, or the mayor, that was for it. That has not changed. But because of some of the advisors that I have, close friends that I know are my friends and want my best interest at heart, and your best interest at heart, that all agree that we need to do this, I cannot in good faith, two weeks before I'm gone, because I would not be sitting here had, did we not have a runoff. But I also believe that either person that wins in this runoff, whether it be Mr. West or Ms. Mouton, will not make a dish, this difference in where this council's decision would go today, if we had entertained it. But there's too much out there to risk this project to me, to risk this project not being successful. There's, there's just too much, and I'm just gonna tell you. It was a tough decision. I'm almost emotional about it because I care so much about the project, and I would love to vote for it today. But I can't do that, because I know that if I do that, I know what'll happen in the, on social media. I know what'll happen. It'll be that I pushed it through, and it, and it doesn't matter that I had nothing to do with it coming up today, because I didn't. That doesn't matter. We, you know what we say about perception. So, with that said, that's why I'm asking for the council to table it. And when a new mayor comes in, if they want to try to reverse it, that's their prerogative. But based on the individuals that I have sitting on both sides of me today, and based on the majority of those individuals, I do not believe that they're gonna let it drop, and I believe that there's a commitment to take it out to the public, to let the public know what we want to do, because there are plans out there, and it's not to put a parking lot in. It never has been. I could, I could name so many things that were talked about today that are just misinformation, but I'm not gonna do that. But I just want everyone on the council to know, I hope those of you who are for this will, if, if this table passes, it may not. I have no idea. If it doesn't, then absolutely, I'm not gonna vote, ever vote against this project. So, with that said, discussion.
Want to make a comment, Mayor?
Sure.
I, for one, want to be clear. I support downtown river development and truly believe it is an important step to bringing life back to downtown. I have listened to the citizens who are both for and against this plan, and acknowledged there is a perception that it's happening too quickly and without transparency, and that the final plan is not being clearly communicated. For this to be a successful endeavor, we must have the support of the constituents of Beaumont and a clear vision and direction showing our master plan for river development. I wholeheartedly support this project, but cannot vote today because of the timing and lack of communication.
Any other comments? Councilmember Gitts.
I applaud the commitment to increased transparency as to this project. It's been one of my concerns all along, is that we have not been transparent enough with this project. I also want to see riverfront development, but I have been against this particular project for over two years now. I have looked at the downtown development plans that were created in nineteen eighty-four and in nineteen eighty-seven. And neither one of those plans included the notion that the AT&T building should be demolished in order to accentuate riverfront development. Those plans did include some riverfront development ideas, but it did not include any notion that the city should purchased and then demolish the AT&T building to create a grassy field, which, as I understand it, is what the plan is right now. If there are other plans out there, I would like to see what they are too, because they have not been revealed to me. The whole idea of riverfront development, as I understand it, at least at the earliest stages, is to allow people the opportunity to come downtown and enjoy our river, get something good to eat, maybe have a glass of wine, listen to some music. These are some of the things that are being touted as desirable attributes in Port Naches and other cities that are using their riverfronts. There's a way to do this, an easy way to do this, without purchasing and demolishing the AT&T building. We can make this a food truck park, and we have talked about that before Hurricane Harvey. We actually had plans underway to do that. I invite any of y'all to go look at the AT&T building in the back parking lot. It's a long way from the river, a long way. There's a railroad train track that is between the parking lot and the river. It's owned by the port. There is nothing in the world that would stop us from working together with the port, and I see one of our port commissioners back there, Hi, Pat. There's nothing that would stop us from the port, because I'm sure that they would welcome the opportunity to collaborate with the city on this. We can make where, was that switching yard beautiful? We can put grass in there, we can green it up, we can landscape it. We can put food truck locations down there, concrete pads for food trucks to park in. We can put some restrooms down there. We can build a bandstand. All of that can be done. We can hang lights that would illuminate the darkness, the row of lights that you see that are very popular. These food truck parks are very popular in so-called progressive cities like Austin and Houston, and they bring young people in there by the droves. And we have more food trucks here in Beaumont now than I've ever seen before, and they're very popular. So we could do this kind of as a canary in the coal mine, to see if people would draw themselves downtown, to see if that's- to see if that's an idea that we could have. And what's a nice thing about food trucks? Well, if the river reaches flooding crest again, guess what? You turn the truck on and you leave. Your building's not wiped out. I think that would be an easy, quick opportunity to do something very neat downtown. You could then take it a step further and engineer some boat parking berths or a dock to have a small marina and get people to come in that way. Because a lot of people in southeast Texas have boats and they would love to be able to come and dock their boat and walk up to a food truck park and get something to eat on a hot summer day. So yes, I am for riverfront development and it can be done without the purchase and acquisition of this. And I'm a friend of Tom Flanagan. We grew up together in Port Arthur and he's probably biting his teeth together right now. But this is one issue that I think we need to do, we need to have the private sector step up the public sector, the government. We can help do some things. And the idea that I'm throwing out there, I think, is something that we can do and I think it would be successful. Thank you.
Have a comment, Mayor?
Excuse me, just one second. Yes?
I may not have been privy to all of the conversation and discussions that have been had relative to this transaction. And there may be some things that have taken place that I'm not aware of. But in my conversation and communication with the attorney for the seller, and I have in writing, it says, "This offer to sell terminates at five o'clock on June 15th, 2021, unless earlier accepted by the city," and I think the council needs to be aware of that.
I appreciate that.
If something has changed, I don't have it in writing.
So, and I did, in my comments, I did mean to say if the deal was still even available, and I hope that it is. I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Gitts, but I just want to make myself clear. I'm not for what he's proposing. I really do think we need that property to make a huge development and make a big splash. But go ahead. I believe you had the floor, Councilmember Turner. Go ahead, please.
Yes, ma'am. These are some facts that I think the city of Beaumont deserves to know, including the citizens in the audience. Ages thirty-five to fifty-four in Beaumont is the users' population. That's twenty-two point five percent. Second is ages five through seventeen. That's seventeen point two percent. Third is ages twenty-five through thirty-four. That's fifteen point three percent. Over sixty-five years old, fourteen point one percent. Ages fifty-five to sixty-four, twelve point two percent. Ages eighteen to twenty-four, eleven point zero percent. And ages five and under, seven point eight percent. I challenge everyone in this audience to do research. Compare our city to cities outside in Texas. I want you to fact-check me. Out of every city, we are one of the only cities who have dropped in population. Everyone has increased in over ten thousand people in population. Our city has declined. So I challenge everyone to be open-minded about different ideas in the future. Because in 2009, we had, I mean in 2000, we had two thousand, we had two hundred and nine thousand people. 2010, we had two hundred and eighteen thousand people. Now, if you look now, it went from two hundred and eighteen thousand to roughly around two hundred and fifteen thousand people. Go look at every city around our size like Tyler, Texas. Go look at Waco, and we're talking right here in Texas. Ask yourself, when we live here today, why has our population decreased and everyone around us in Texas increased?
Thank you. Is that all you have, Councilmember? Thank you.
I'm not sure everyone heard my comment earlier, but I do commend the mayor for her bold vision to develop downtown Beaumont and her wisdom in requesting that this council table this issue until after the election. She's not asking that we kill this, but that we table it until more opportune time. Although I do support riverfront development, downtown development, although I do support the project at 555 Main Street, I do believe that the council has moved too quickly, and it starts with me. I take full responsibility. I'm a part of this council, that we've moved too quickly. And we need to slow the process down so that our citizens can catch up to us. I believe we need to do a better job at educating and communicating to the city what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how we're going to do it. And then at the end of the day, we can all agree to disagree without being disagreeable and ripping our city apart. And we can move forward together as a community to make a better place for our families, for our children, and for our grandchildren. So please hear what the mayor's saying. She has a vision, and it's a bold vision. Big ideals demand bold leaders that are willing to step out and take calculated risk. But it's not only important what you do, it's important of how and when you do it. So please understand what's being discussed here today, a tabling until a more opportune time after the election of our new mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
I have one correction, Mayor, on my numbers. Beaumont's population was a hundred and nine thousand in the early 2000s. And in 2010, it was a hundred and eighteen thousand. So I challenge everyone to see where we are as of today and compare us to other cities in Texas around our size. I wanted just to correct myself on my numbers.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, please.
I'd like to ask council, has there been any indication that the, Mr. Flanagan has agreed to extend the expiration date of this offer for contract? Is there anything in the contract that talks about any options to the contract?
Other comments? Yes, sir.
I was wondering, same thing. How can we table this and we don't even know if it's gonna be available if we table it? I had a couple of questions about the building itself, because there's some questions that some of the citizens had asked. How much does the building make in taxes for the city? How much do they pay the city? Property taxes to the city every year?
I think going back to 2018, it was on the tax roll for over four million dollars. And then it's decreased in the last, I believe, the last two years. It's somewhere around two point two million right now.
But not, you're talking about the appraisal, not the taxes.
But the taxes that would go to the city of Beaumont under that scenario.
Some people had asked, you know, they don't want to take it off the tax rolls.
Yeah.
True.
It's not as much has been, has been put out there, but I think it can give you a pretty.
If it's really on the tax roll for two point two million, about sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars to the city of Beaumont?
Every year, for every year.
Based on that value? That's to us, the entity.
Sixteen to seventeen thousand. Go ahead, please.
Also was asked, do we know if there is any asbestos abatement that would have to be done on the building? Or contaminated dirt that may have to be removed? And who would pay for all that if it has to be done?
We would pay for that and that has not been done. We don't, we don't own the building. I believe the council would like to take the building down if the city acquires it. So we think there's asbestos. We have an estimated cost for the demolition. We take, we've taken down a number of buildings over the last twenty-plus years. Most of them have asbestos. So we're familiar with that process, but we, because we don't own the building, we have not gone in and done that assessment.
One more question, Mayor. If we were able to table this, I think we have to have a date. We can't just table it indefinitely until the future. Do we have to table it until a certain meeting?
You don't have to, and I would like to say that anyone that doesn't agree with this, I'm not gonna be upset if you don't. I have my personal reasons because I just do not want it to be known that I tried to push something through right before I left without any reason. And I believe that y'all, you guys up here will continue and do great and the next mayor could be involved. I don't think that would change anything, but I'm not gonna put myself in that position. So I think as far as I would be concerned, I would say if I were to give, I would, I would say thirty to sixty days. And that would only, you know, that's gonna be only if Mr. Flanagan is willing to give an extension, if that would be available. And I do not know the answer to that. I had heard that there was a willingness. That was through the grapevine. I've not talked to him about it.
I would say if this is approved to table this event, that sometime between now and whenever it comes up to vote, that maybe some type of town hall meeting or something to get all the correct information out to the citizens.
Well, our council members could go to neighborhood associations to give the correct information. I know that there's a number out there that says it's gonna cost two million dollars to tear it down, two million plus. I've heard from contractors, and I know we have one sitting here, and I'm not gonna put you on the spot, but I have heard that it's more like about north of half a million, but not two million. But that's, that's just a, that's just a.
Some people are saying that they don't want to do it because they're afraid it's gonna increase their taxes.
I don't know how that.
It's a lot of misinformation out there.
There is. And they're probably, even if the council moves forward and tries to educate the public on it, it will still be misinformation, but at least we would have tried. And that's.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Certainly.
Mr. Flanagan's here in the audience. Would it be appropriate for us to ask him to answer that question?
Absolutely, if that's what you prefer to do.
Mr. Flanagan, would you be willing to come answer a question for us?
Is that his attorney? This is not out of the norm. The council has done this before, so I just don't want you to think that we are doing something different. What Councilmember Neal to ask is totally appropriate for this council and most council members that are sitting up here have done the same in some way or another, maybe not exactly the same issue.
My question is, the current agreement expires at five o'clock this evening. Would you entertain an extension to the contract as far as time?
My feelings at this time, it's kind of funny, you know, I was approached by the city. We weren't, we didn't have a for-sale sign. We didn't have a for-sale sign on the building. One thing I asked is, it's gonna be a controversial subject, you know, and I didn't believe so. But that being said, we had a good debate. I think we're kind of a good place, Mayor. Maybe it wasn't what I expected or hoped for coming in the room, but I think you came to the right place. And I think it has to be done right, as Councilman Fellshaw said and several others. I'm gonna get myself in a lot of trouble because I have an attorney that keeps me out of trouble and I respect him and he's way smarter than me and he's advising me not to extend, but I would be willing to do that and I hope, I hope he doesn't kick me out or doesn't represent me anymore, but.
He's smiling.
On the condition that we would set a reasonable period of time. And it would be my hope that we wouldn't be doing character assassination in the meantime. And a little bit, it affected me, but a lot of it affected you guys. And I appreciate your courage in going through that and I hope we can refrain from that. I know you can assure me that, but I hope we can be gentlemen and ladies. So could there be a thirty-day period? Is that enough time?
It is for me. I won't be here, but that'll be up to the council.
I personally would like to see a ninety-day extension.
Can she split?
I think that's a bit much, Councilman. I could, I could agree to a sixty-day extension and depending on where we are then, maybe if we're making progress and moving forward. And I'm prepared to disclose anything and everything that the city wants.
So can, do you mind? So if there is an extension and you grant. No, he's still there. I mean, a lot of the, I guess, misinformation has been about tearing the building down and what it would cost. Obviously, the city cannot.
Well, I was talking about the personal stuff, you know, that there was something dishonest or there was something secret. Or just the trashing of character, you know, it's horrible.
It is.
Just horrible, the city. But, you know, out of that comes something good. Maybe this whole meeting is gonna be something good, so. I'm sorry, you were saying?
No, I was, and maybe this is, I'm, you know, I'm not gonna be in on it. I'll be gone, but I'll be here. I just won't be here. Let's hope. That, you know, maybe, and I don't know, but one of the things that we've talked about a lot on the council since this all began two years ago, is how much would it cost to take down the building? And there's been a lot of misinformation out there. One of the reasons we can't get a firm number is because we can't actually have someone go in and look at the building to do it.
You can do that anytime.
Okay, that was my question. If the council desires.
Report, and, you know, our guy looked at it, who we've done a lot of work with. He didn't have any major concerns for us. We were gonna turn it back into, you know, commercial use. And he'd be glad to set up a meeting with him and provide anything that you need.
Any other questions of Mr. Flanagan, council? Okay, we really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay, any other comments, questions, concerns?
Mayor?
Would you want to amend your motion to include the time period?
Yes, we could, but also I would hope that we can get this in writing as soon as the meeting's over. Okay, Mr. Flanagan? We can get this in writing as soon as the meeting's over. Thank you. Oh, Chris, I'm sorry. I thought you were saying something about, yeah, okay, thank you.
I would hope that during the sixty-day period that we can get out all the relevant information on our Facebook page, on our website, any way we can to get this out to the public, the relevant information or true information, so it's a lot less misinformation out there.
Agreed.
And that'd be more support.
Agreed. And we did have a, and the council as a whole has seen it. There was a plan in 2008. Just, and we all have seen that.
Renderings and those type of deals.
That's right. That could be updated. All right, anything else, council? Would you amend your motion for sixty days? Do you mind doing that? I'm not telling you to, I'm asking you to.
No, I would. I would amend it to, to table the vote on the property at 555 Main Street until after the election of the new mayor, not to exceed sixty days.
Thank you. Are you good with that second? Okay. There is a motion and a second on the floor to table this item for sixty days. And I'll call for the vote, please. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, one nay, and we'll move to the next item, please.
Mayor, Council item number nineteen is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number one.
Oh, okay, okay, we're gonna just give a little pause if anyone needs to leave now or would like to for about five minutes, five minutes, please, five minutes. I'm on a time constraint. Y'all remember that? Help me out.
We will.
Chelsea, anybody?
Mayor, Council item number nineteen is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number one to the contract with Viking Painting LLC related to the West Elevated Storage Tank Rehabilitation Project. Back in February of this year, the council awarded a contract in the amount of eight hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Proposed change order number one is in the amount of two hundred and five thousand six hundred dollars. It's required for the replacement of sixteen rafters due to unforeseen section loss from corrosion found during construction. Uh, without the replacement, the tank will not be able to support the proposed containment system that would prevent blasting and coating debris from impacting the area surrounding the tank. A total of forty-five working days would be added to the contract for the additional work. If approved, uh, change order number one would result in a new contract amount of one million fifty-five thousand five hundred dollars, and a new estimated substantial completion date of January the third, twenty twenty-two. Uh, funds are available in the capital program. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, Council. You've heard the reading of this item. Is there a motion, please?
Move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second? There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval? Is there any discussion? Okay, there being none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty, please.
Item number twenty is an ordinance of the city of Beaumont, Texas approving the rates proposed by Centerpoint Energy Resources Corp. Doing business as Centerpoint Energy in Tex, and Centerpoint Energy Texas Gas, Centerpoint or Company. A company's gas reliability infrastructure program, known as GRIP, filing made with the city on March the fourth, twenty twenty-one, finding that the meeting complies with the Open Meetings Act, making other findings and provisions related to the subject, and declaring an effective date. The city attorney, Tyrone Cooper, will lead the item.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. On March the fourth of this year, Centerpoint Energy filed with the city of Beaumont a request to increase its rates, uh, for its gas reliability infrastructure program, commonly known as a GRIP. Uh, and the council on the twenty-third of March suspended, uh, the effective date of that proposed request to allow for a review of their filings. Uh, that review is ministerial, uh, in, in order to determine whether or not they comply with the GRIP statutes. Uh, that review has been completed and has been determined that they are in compliance with the GRIP, uh, statute filings. Uh, and I have provided for you a customer impact summary that shows what the, uh, the increase in their, uh, rates would be in, in the, uh, in the event it's approved. And again, all expenses are be, ought to be paid by the, uh, the company, and we would, uh, request that the ordinance be approved.
Thank you. Is there a motion on this item, Council?
Move to approve.
Thank you, there's a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Any questions or discussions? Okay, there being...
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, please.
What happens if we say no, that we don't approve this rate increase?
Well, uh, if you don't approve it, it will automatically go into effect as a matter of law on June seventeen.
So...
You have original jurisdiction, and again, I indicated, as I indicated, it's a ministerial review, uh, which, you know, because you have jurisdiction, you are afforded the opportunity to review their filings, which is what has been done. And it has been determined that their filings are in compliance with the statute, so they've done what the law requires.
So what we're, and this is really for the public, the, the city council does not have the ability to direct our local gas provider as to what their rates are gonna be. We don't have the ability to control that. If they say they're going up, we have the ability to review to make sure all their paperwork is correct. But once that's done, that's about as far as we can go, that's what you're telling us.
That's not correct. You have, uh, no authority to change their request as it pertains to their GRIP filing.
Okay.
If it's any other request for a rate increase, then you have the ability to, uh, review that filing and determine whether it's accurate or effective and should, uh, go into effect. But as to a GRIP, as I indicated, it's a ministerial review, which means you have no authority to change the GRIP filing request, if it complies with the GRIP statutes, and it's been determined that it does.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, there's, um, all in favor but one no, uh, Councilmember Gates voted no. All right, next item, please.
Mayor, Council item number twenty-one is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance vacating and abandoning a two-hundred-and-thirty-foot by twenty-foot portion of an alley, excluding an existing sewer line easement, Block One of the South End Edition, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Uh, Grant Keller of Aquero Ventures is requesting abandonment of the alley. At a joint public hearing held on May the seventeenth, the planning commission recommended five to zero to approve the request with the following conditions. Number one, expansion joints shall be placed along the edge of the easement. Number two, if approved, applicant shall obtain an appraisal and title commitment for the property to be abandoned at their expense. Appraisal and title commitment must be submitted to the planning office along with proof that payment has been arranged prior to the item being placed on the city council's agenda. All of the required items related to number two have been submitted, so the administration recommends approval with the first condition.
Thank you, Council. You have heard the reading of item number twenty-one. Is there a motion on this item, please?
So moved with the condition.
Thank you. Is there a second? A question? Can I get a second first, please?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, go ahead, please.
Uh, can you explain to me, uh, the expansion joints along the easement, what that exactly, what exactly is that?
Probably best for Mr. Bucko, we act to answer that.
I, I only know because of the engineering comments, we're in the report. But the engineers did ask to have expansion joints along the easement, so that they would have easier access to the, uh, line if they needed access.
Yeah, they, what that's gonna be, sorry, I didn't read the engineering notes, but what that's gonna be for is if they pave it over, that we can easily break out a section without having to saw cut and, and create that area. So it just makes it easier to maintain in the future.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, Council? All right, there was a motion and a second with the, uh, condition. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-two, please.
Mayor, Council item twenty-two is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a coffee shop in a G C M D two, General Commercial Multiple Family Two District, for property located at thirty-one fifty-four Shannon Avenue, the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. A joint public hearing held on May the seventeenth, the planning commission recommended five to zero to approve the request with three conditions that are listed in your staff memorandum. The administration recommends approval with the same three conditions.
Thank you. Council, you've heard the reading of item number twenty-two. Is there a motion on this item, please?
You, you have two, the specific use permit and the zone change.
Oh, do them separately, okay. Um, can I have a motion, please, on the zone change first, please?
Move to approve with the conditions.
All right, that, that, the conditions, I believe, are in the specific use permit, right? So, um, can you amend that motion to say, um, the zone change, please?
Move the zone change.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for the zone change. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Um, now, can I entertain a motion, please, for the specific use permit with the conditions?
Move to approve with the conditions for the specific use permit.
Thank you, is there a second on that item? There's a motion and a second on that item. Is there any discussion, questions, comments? There being none, all in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The motion carries unanimously. That concludes our general business. I would like-
Executive session.
Yeah, yeah. I would like to read at the close of the city council meeting, I haven't forgot it all yet. At the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to the deliberation of the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property in accordance with section five-five-one point zero-seven-two of the government code to wit, five-five-five Main Street. Consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with section five-five-one point zero-seven-one of the government code, Rhonda Scott versus the City of Beaumont, case number zero-two-zero-seven-zero-two-four. Okay. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak, if you would like to make public comment today, now is the time to do so. If you would like to speak and you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip at the rear of the room and hand it to the city clerk at the front of the room. She will call out your name, and as I mentioned earlier, we would appreciate if you'd keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up.
Ricky Jason, ten-seventy-five Magnolia, Beaumont, Texas.
Greetings. First of all, I'm community activist Ricky Jason, and I am the protege of the late Dick Gregory, and I'm also the filmmaker of Bird Life and Tragic Death of James Bird Junior. June seventh, make twenty-three years, he was dragged to his death, and we just had another dragon in Liberty, Texas. God bless his soul. And thank you, Mayor Beck Ames, because you have been a lightning rod behind this board, and I'm very appreciative of you, and I thank you for everything you've done for this community, you know, and love you to death. And I also like to thank Mr. Cooper, you know, a lot of people don't give him his due. The man is a legend, he's an icon, and it's Mr. Cooper. Put respect on his name. Thank you. And one more thing I'd like to say, I don't know either candidate that's running for mayor, I don't know if I made it out, but I know one thing, every time something pops up or go off in Beaumont, she's there.
Okay, we can't have a campaign speech here, Mr.-
I know, I know, I'm not having a campaign speech. I'm just saying she's there. But I like to say the media around here, they likes to slander, I got a lot of calls from people saying that. It's a lot of things that happen. This week just passed on the radio, you know, a woman can do anything a man can do, maybe sometime even better. Y'all got rid of the statues, and I'm so happy that y'all did, but y'all forgot to get rid of this. This keep us divided. I don't care who own it, it needs to be trashed where the statues is. This examiner newspaper, it got us divided.
Ricky, please.
We all bleed the same blood, and like I said, I pray to God and I wish you the best, Ms. Beck Ames, because like I said, you are a jewel, you are a genius, and I'm humbled to stand in your company. And I like to thank Mr. Neil for being so real. I like to thank his mother and father, and I like to say Mr. W. L. Pate, I'm praying that he recover because he's my mentor, and he's an icon just himself. But like I said, we need to all love one another because love is bigger than hate, and I hope y'all get this solution passed. And God bless y'all. Thank you so, so much, and thank you, Mr. Cooper, for all you do. God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. James.
Jeremy Pavlich, six-ninety-five Chamberlain Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Been here a while, haven't we?
Yes, we have.
This is to the ones who make us proud. I came here today excited about the energy that we feel in the city of Beaumont. As someone who's had the honor of personally attended these meetings for the last many years, I have witnessed great plans and projects put into action. I've seen my own son's face light up on top of the city at Mardi Gras at night. I held hands with the prettiest girl in Beaumont at Town Lake and watched the fireworks on July fourth. Just this past weekend, I witnessed at Pride Fest, people loving each other and celebrating each other, smiling from ear to ear. These times are made possible with the good work that is done in here, and it has been noticed. Week after week, the council meets to take care of the business of the city. Time is taken out of everyone's day to meet and discuss the ideas and plans to help the city prosper. I appreciate all the dedication I have witnessed. It is inspiring. It's also to see, is inspiring to see a young man who works in the same industry as me, fighting to keep work local and promoting tradecraft and opportunities for employment. It is inspired to see a retired union member take seat, showing all of us working people that we now have a city at the table for the city affairs. I go on to mention how inspiring it is to see a young white man and a young black man develop a friendship, a bond, work together to try to heal the divide. It is inspiring to see a preacher who has dedicated his message to bringing this to one city. It is inspiring to see city leadership that has given decades of their lives to make this place amazing. History will reflect all the efforts that y'all put into building this foundation. But I cannot go on without mentioning what I am not proud of. All the while I have witnessed these great things, I've also experienced evil. I've seen outright hate, spiteful actions. I've watched theatrics with the sole intention of causing divide. I have not been very proud of one of you. And I cannot be silent anymore. With you and your pettiness, you would sabotage everything that us Beaumont kids have ever dreamed of. You would much rather scream in your echo chambers, vile lies, just so that you could try and fill that very empty, black little hole in your chest. You do not want to build anything, you just want to destroy everyone around you and then stand on that pile of rubble afterwards. The fans have only seen your webs of deceit that you spin. Anyone paying attention can see that you are completely ineffective and that you have no capacity to work with anyone as a team. And your weak attempts at slandering those that oppose your philosophy, they do nothing but show us all how loud and pitiful you really are. Enough energy has been wasted today on giving recognition to the bad apple. With time, the rotten fruit will fall from this tree, and a new blossom will take your place. I wanted to spend my time here today to honor those of us who make us proud. To the staff, to the city employees, thank all of you, for we all witnessed what y'all have to endure, and we know that y'all go above and beyond, and it has been noticed. And to the outgoing mayor, thank you for your dedication. Although at times it may have seemed thankless, just know that you will always be remembered as the mayor who made Beaumont beautiful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlich.
Rodney Dinclaw.
I think he must have left.
No, he's here. I don't see his address on here, sorry.
Oh, there he is, okay.
It's on Chaseon Avenue, Beaumont, Texas.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I'm here for two reasons. The first reason is I went to Alice Key City Pool this Sunday. Thank God that we could go out this year to the city pool, but the hydraulic chair to get the disabled in and out of the water doesn't work, hasn't worked for two years. He has said that when the pool was open the year before last, he requested that it gets fixed. No one's came out there to fix it. I've called, no one's returned my call, so I'm asking if y'all could get someone out there to fix it so it'll be easier for me to get in and out of the pool. Lifeguards had to help me in my chair this Sunday. Thank God they were there and willing to help, and I thank them for that, but I want to ask y'all to please get whoever y'all got to get to get that chair fixed. Also, on the bus situation, I know y'all been arguing about it for, you know, so long, but it's fixing turned into a crisis. You know, a lot of us disabled people ride that bus to get to and fro doctors' appointments, and there is word out there that if there is evacuation called this year, which there is a good chance there might be, that these bus drivers ain't gonna come evacuate us. So I ask y'all, I know y'all don't, y'all got y'all's reasons not to get involved, but please get involved because, you know, like us disabled people and low-income people, we got to get to doctors and, you know, back and forth to work, you know. So I ask y'all to please consider getting involved before they go on strike, and then we're S.O.L. So I thank y'all, and God bless y'all.
Thank you, Rodney. We'll take note. Thank you very much.
David Pete, sixty-three fifty-five Chin Lane, Beaumont, Texas.
Is he back there? Um-
Seems like he may have left, mayor.
Okay, all right.
Brian Nipfo, sixty-nine fifty-five Shanahan, Beaumont, Texas.
Okay, so my notes have changed since this didn't go through, obviously, but my entire purpose of being up here was transparency. That is the main thing that was not conveyed to anyone outside of executive session, which we're not privy to. So all we know is what was speculation, you know, could be talked about outside of the room legally and what have you. So, you know, I've not seen a master plan, phases, cost, nothing. I mean, no vision, no nothing. You state, Ms. Mayor, that you didn't spearhead this, and it's only been talked about for a couple of weeks. I mean, why push a project of this magnitude, you know, to start without all the relevant data, costs, timeframes, you know, who's going to come in? Is this a private-public venture? Is the city funding the entire thing? Is the city building a restaurant? I mean, are we bringing in a major chain? Who might be involved? Nothing was brought up. I mean, any project over fifty thousand dollars, in my understanding, is brought, you know, up for discussion. It requires a full workup, engineering, bids, options, discussion, comments, and a vote. And so, looks like we may have sixty days. I am all for downtown revitalization. I ran on it. I would love to see pretty pictures of restaurants, Landry's Agreements, Papa's Agreements, somebody coming in. We just didn't get that, so all we had to do was speculate. And what happens when you speculate? You get the worst. So that could be combated by transparency. Put the real agenda out, put it all over the place, Facebook, town hall meetings, anywhere. We have sixty days to get this done. Let's do it right.
Thank you, Mr. Nipfo.
There, and I hope I don't mispronounce, there Faro?
The Pharaoh.
The Pharaoh? Valadia Richard, fifty-two seventy-five Parkview Drive, Beaumont, Texas. Sorry.
It's okay. Good afternoon. My name is The Pharaoh Valada Richard. I'm here today as the owner of the House of Pearls. It is a business that I started eleven years ago as a former social worker in Los Angeles, California. I work with suicidal homicidal adolescents. I was a crisis interventionist, as well as a licensed group home administrator. The reason I'm here today is to petition you and to ask you, the city council, if you would consider a grant for my organization. I'm working on my five-on-one C three status, because I would like to house at least three hundred of the homeless people that are currently displaced here in Beaumont, Texas during hurricane season. I did petition you before to no avail, and several of those people have died in flooding situations where literally they have to go under the car wash on Calder Street for shelter. I think it's a travesty, especially since we have trillion-dollar companies here like Mobile Oil, we have Alaro, we have the resources to provide services. A lot of these people are mentally displaced, I mean mentally disabled, they're schizophrenic, they're bipolar, they don't have the money, they don't have medication. I need cell phones, I need at least two to three hundred cell phones that each individual can have a cellphone. I need generators, even if I'm building a tent city, and I'm doing this in honor of Cheyenne Muntz. She was a young lady that was murdered on Pine Street in the twenty-nine-hundred block last week. She was one of my clients that I met at Bates and Harrius Under the Bridge. She just approached me and she said she needed help. She was a victim of domestic violence. I was told by a homeless woman who's been there for eighteen years that if you don't get her out of here, she will be dead. I literally took her to the shelter, the homeless women's shelter, and I won't disclose the location, and she was on a thirty-day hold. She was in an episode, they called me, so I don't understand how she was released, and then within two days, I received a text that she's dead. In my opinion, she did not burglarize the home. In my opinion, she went there for other reasons, and I've already spoken with Assistant District Attorney Cornelius Williams, because I'm willing to provide that information to him. So in her honor, I'm asking that you would consider at least fifteen thousand dollar grant, and this is to provide cell phones to all the displaced homeless people that sleep next to some other place in Henry's place. Why am I asking you for cell phones? That's for a track phone. It costs twenty dollars for the sim, for the card, for unlimited talking and texting, and the phone itself is forty dollars, because they can communicate. If it's raining, they can communicate. If they're being beat, they can communicate. If you don't have a phone, how do you communicate? You can at least call nine-one-one and give them your location. Hurricane season is approaching. It's a shame. I don't even see how we, as a people in this nation, sleep at night, knowing that people are sleeping under a bridge. So I ask you to consider that, and I also ask you to consider a three-million-dollar grant from our organization, the House of Pearls, to help the homeless women, men, and children, disabled veterans, Purple Heart veterans that are sleeping on the park. It's a shame that Purple Heart veterans are sleeping outside. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
WR Sam Senior, seventeen sixty-one Rena Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
It's good to be here. Good to see all of you. I stand today just to congratulate you on the hard job, the hard work that you've contributed, and it's encouraging to see that people have spent many years doing what you do, and for us to still be here as one, and to continue on to make this city a better place, I'm very proud of you. When you look around and you look at the two guys on the end, the contributions that they make, and still all the punishment that comes with it, and that they are still here, I say thank God for you. And for the new people that's here, you have a lot that you can contribute, and I'm proud of the people that's serving at the present time, and hoping that you can continue to move this city forward. And I know that we will, because we're not going to give up the ship. And for the old ones, like the man with his head down, I'm sorry. But, and a special, a special thanks to you two. Becky, you know, thank you so very much. Arwin, thank you for the long term and the contribution that you've made to this community for years, and you guys have put your best foot forward to bring this city to where it is today, and I'm sure the rest of you here is going to continue to do that. And everybody in this city, the young people that works out in the city, I thank them for the contribution that they make. So Becky, we very proud of you. With all our fights we've had, thank you and wish nothing but the best for you. And Arwin, hang in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sam.
That's all I have, mayor.
Okay, if there's no one else, all right, I will, I don't remember where I started last week. How about I start right in the middle? How about you, sir? Councilmember Turner, you got anything?
Yes, Juneteenth weekend coming up. Make sure we actually exercise and support and celebrate what people experience to get to where we are today. So I encourage everyone to enjoy the Juneteenth festivities. On Friday night, we have a business mixer at the Elegante. On Saturday morning, it's a freedom bike ride, so y'all feel free to come and bike ride downtown and enjoy our beautiful downtown. And on Saturday evening, it's Tyrrell Park, but most importantly, it's voting time. So we encourage you guys to get out and vote and exercise your right to vote, and we encourage you to encourage everyone else to participate in the process. Thank y'all, have a good day.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner. Councilmember Phil Schell.
Thank you, mayor. Today is the farewell reception honoring Mayor Becky Ames for twenty-seven years of service at large and as city mayor. It's this afternoon from four-thirty to six-thirty at the Downtown Event Center, open to the public. She's got nine minutes to do executive session and to get to her event, but just want to remind everybody to come by and congratulate the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Samuel. Thank you. Councilmember Neil.
Thank you, mayor. You know, I got several things I would like to say, but I'm going to keep this short, and I just-
And I'd just say one, you know, the, I would like to ask for a prayer request for probably the biggest fan of Beaumont, Texas, and that's our friend, W. L. Pate. He could sure use it, and I would like for this city to pray for him. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Councilmember Durio, and then Councilmember Gads.
I just want to say, this process that we're going through now is an experience, and, but it's all part of the job. And I would just ask the citizens of Beaumont, you, you have to trust that the council is not going to make a huge decision like this without dotting the i's, crossing your t's, without making sure everything is correct. You elected us to make the hard decisions, and I just ask that you trust us that we're going to do that, and we're going to, we're going to work hard to make good decisions to represent the people of Beaumont.
Thank you. Councilmember Gads.
I just want to second what Councilmember Neal said about W. L. Pate. He's in the fight of his life right now, and he needs everybody's prayers. The, moving on to another issue, the spray park at Rogers Park has not been working properly. Everybody was real excited when we upgraded the spray park. I think Milton Zachary from the Parks Department came out there last week and got it working. But I've had multiple complaints from parents that have taken their kids there this week, and they can't get it to work. Can we get somebody to check into seeing what the problem is over there and try to get it fixed, Mr. Manager? Thank you. Also, lastly, four months ago, we were told that we had a fund balance of forty-three million dollars, and I was pleasantly surprised to see our April finance report. It seems to have grown to fifty-three million dollars in four months. To what do we attribute that increase?
Yeah, I mean, we can't discuss it, but you can answer, yeah.
Well, number one, the starting fund balance was much higher. We submit the budget to you by August the fifteenth, right? So we're putting numbers together in June and July, best numbers we have. Starting fund balance was actually somewhere around, let's see, almost two, one and a half million dollars higher than the budget. We realized a lot of sales tax revenue, additional sales tax revenue, additional property tax revenue, additional industrial payments. We continue to live within our means, meaning we, we try to come in under budget every year, which most years we do. And then when you add the CARES Act money and the American Rescue Plan money, which was about eight-point-three million total, then you get up to about fifty-three million dollars.
So a lot of that was because of the addition of the CARES Act money?
A lot of it was.
Okay, thank you.
All right. That's all, councilmember? Nothing, councilman? Councilmember, counselor? Okay, all right. I really don't have anything, been a long meeting, but I do, I do, there was one more thing that I wanted to add, because there was a couple of people that said this, and I just want to correct it. The agreement that was out there, people were saying it was no good because it wasn't signed or dated. The city doesn't sign or date anything until the council votes. And if you think about it, that makes sense, because if it doesn't pass or then you'd have an executed agreement that the council didn't vote on. So that's been said a lot out there. It was said today by someone. But if you think about the reason the county, the city, the city staff never signs anything, and I never sign anything until the council votes. It's not signed or dated. That's all I wanted to clarify. And I thank y'all for coming, and we will now recess into executive session.